Greetings, community members and city council members. My name is Alex Nguyen. I am the city manager and we are back. Along with me is our chief financial officer, Ms. Betsy George. We're back with a second video presentation for what will be our final budget proposal. It's gone through a couple of public meetings and it's headed towards the city council for the formal public hearing on June 7. So the overview, so this is going to be similar to the prior presentation, except that it adds more information and is more comprehensive, especially regarding all of the city's funds. But overall, we're going to start with the big picture, where we've been recently and where we believe we're headed. I will do a quick budgeting 101 review. So that as a refresher for people or for any new viewers to have a, at least an initial basic understanding of where city revenues come from specifically with the breakdown of the taxes. We'll also review the year that we're in. So for purposes of this new budget presentation, it will be a review of the prior year, which we're still in in terms of the fiscal year. Then we will discuss what we are actually proposing for the next fiscal year budget, which would be for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. And then we'll have some concluding remarks. So a big picture where we were and where we are going. So before I get into this slide, which is, has a lot of good information and does truly tell the story of what's been happening here at Oxnard City Hall and the city over the last three or so years. But I do want to preface it once again by saying we have no bad news in this upcoming budget. Therefore, we have no difficult or bad choices to make. We only have good choices to make. In other words, we are not facing any cuts or any reductions. We are continuing on our stated path of making restorations. And we'll talk a little bit about how while we are making progress and moving forward, that I certainly expect it to slow down in this coming year primarily due to all the issues and activities and events happening in the world around us. So very quickly, only three years ago, in the first budget that I presented to the city council here, we were confronted with a $9.2 million structural deficit. That was literally only three budget cycles ago. And after that difficult year where we had to make significant cuts, including layoffs of city staff. Then of course, along with the rest of the planet, we were hit by this global pandemic. And so everyone has a pretty good understanding about, while we clearly still don't agree on the science of it all, we certainly have an understanding about the impacts of it all. So like all cities, we've gone through that pandemic-induced recession. It was brief in terms of the severity, but it was steep and severe. And then like everyone else, we worked through the recovery of that. Thanks to the voters who entrusted us with Measure E. We also received, starting to receive sufficient revenues to operate the city. And as we're coming out of this pandemic, or at least we certainly hope we are, as we record this video, our numbers unfortunately are starting to slowly inch up again. But we can see that we've made significant progress and we're still headed towards and continuing budget restorations. We're looking forward to improvements as well as eventually in the, in the coming years, some specific additions as well. So I hope that in addition to looking at this video, you can either download or look at the accompanying staff report in this presentation online so that you can take more time. Or in fact, you can also of course hit the pause button to study some of these slides. Many of the slides ahead of us have a lot of good information. So the next prefacing comment that is significant is that we on staff are, in our presentation of this upcoming budget, are being very mindful about what is going to happen in early 2029. And that is when Measure O will be sunsetting. We expect to, if all, if it all happens on the natural, we expect to have our last revenue payment for Measure O, which people may recall is the half cent sales tax that was approved for a 20-year duration. So that expires again in, well, it'll expire at the end of 2028 and we should receive the last payment in the spring of 2029. And our projection is that that will be an approximate $20 million reduction in the general fund. So we are moving forward with that in mind so that we actually are spending within our means. So here is a quick review and again, there's a lot of information on this, on this slide, but it, it looks backwards a little bit. So we can see where the numbers have been, where they are and where they're headed. So you can see, if you go back to the FY 2018, 2019, here you can see where our numbers were. And you can see the impact between COVID in terms of various reductions, but also you can see the beginning of increases with regard to Measure E. And when, we haven't closed the books yet on this year, but if you look at the 2122 column, you can see where we expect to end this year. And then what we have projected for in the following year. So of course, there is a significant increase in terms of Measure E. The hotel tax, also called the TOT, the transit occupancy tax. We are projecting it to be fully recovered post the pandemic in this coming fiscal year. So you can see there's a projection here of it reaching 5.6 million annually again, which is where it was prior to the pandemic. So that's just breaking, the projection there is it'll break even going back three years, which is different from had there obviously not been this pandemic and the other situation in the world around us, this number would have increased a little bit as well. But in terms of our financial status, we as a city are in a very, very solid position. So on staff, we feel very positive about this. Now, what does it all mean? Well, basically the revenue that we can expect each year, it is whatever it is and, and we have our projections and we usually come in pretty close to those numbers. Based on how the city council accepts or changes our recommendations in how we invest the revenue, right, it's going to go into staffing, into the workforce. And it goes into the resources that the workforce needs, such as equipment facilities and infrastructure, both physical and invisible, such as the information technology, infrastructure, software and what have you. So how we mix this investment obviously dictates the outcomes of what we all, the staff, the workforce and all the resources, what we can produce in terms of services, programs, maintenance, as well as very, some few areas for growth. So the challenges I see in the year ahead and, and right now it's looking to me like it could be beyond the year. But these are important things to keep in mind. We are in the process of renegotiating all of our labor contracts. We have six labor units that are employed here for the city. So we, while we have a sense of where those numbers are headed, we don't have the finals of numbers yet. So, but we do have new labor contracts and it is a very competitive labor market for municipal governments as well as most other sectors in the economy. We obviously have inflation that appears to be at a 40-year high. That is impacting the city as well because we also consume goods and energy and fuel. And so you'll see that in a minute here when I get to energy costs. The supply chain disruption also disrupts some of the work that we do. Whether it's a delay in getting parts that we need for, for our maintenance and equipment or materials we need for construction. But it, there is a disruption across the globe. It also impacts local government. I already mentioned this energy cost. We consume electricity and natural gas as well as water. So all of these costs that are impacting the country also impact cities. The global pandemic, the COVID pandemic is, we're not in the, the clear there. It is lingering and continuing. Recently, our numbers have gone back up, not just in the city in terms of the general population or the county, but in among city staff as well. I'm going to skip the great resignation. I'll come back to that. We have for many years, a lot of deferred maintenance and you know, the, the longer it takes us to catch up on that, unfortunately, the worse it gets. But that is something that we are, are working to get on top of. It's not going to happen overnight, but we are paying attention to it. And then there will be new lawsuits, which is a, as I said this in the last video, that's just a normal part of how we settle various disputes in this country. So for me, that's just part of conducting business. It's, it can be significant, but it's also not entirely out of the ordinary. Then I want to go back to the great resignation because that phenomenon across the country is, is fascinating and perplexing, but certainly has a material impact in our ability to hire the talent that we need to continue to improve the services and programs that we want to provide for our community and to improve the organization of City Hall that supports all of those programs and services. There's, and, and anyone who pays attention to what's happening in the news, there's been a lot of discussion about the great resignation, the great retirement. They're just very, the results, all of which is that there are fewer and fewer qualified candidates for the jobs that we have and that we need to fill for this city. So that is going to also be a significant hurdle for us to overcome in this coming year. And I'm, I'm concerned that all of these events here that you see on this page, any one of these can slow us down, but the combination of these, I think is pretty significant and something we haven't dealt with before. In terms of having so many significant events happening all at once. But I do expect these challenges to slow us down in the coming year, if not a little bit more. Here is just a couple of quick examples of what we're competing with. And these are entry level jobs. And we're having a hard time in terms of just our entry level positions competing with what is being offered in the private sector. It's kind of, it's going to be a rough year ahead of us. But if you're looking at what these entry jobs in the private sector are offering, it's pretty impressive given where we were only a few years ago. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. George to come on and quickly review the budgeting 101. Ms. George?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Nguyen. My name's Betsy George. I'm the chief financial officer here at the city of Oxnard. And I just have a few slides here on some basic municipal budgeting that might help you understand some of the terms that we use throughout this presentation and in the budget book that we have. So firstly, a fund, that's just a name for an account, the way that we segregate different types of revenues that we get or expenditures that we're extending. So think of it as kind of different pots of money. And then the revenue that we receive is sales tax dollars, property tax dollars, other grants. And then those revenues are expended in the form of expenditures. So those are some base terminologies that we use. Here's some examples of major funds throughout the city. So again, these are the way that we're keeping track of different types of monies that were received. So we have the general fund, which is all the general services throughout the city, fire, police. Many public works dollars are in there. Also, we have water, sewer and refuse. Those are enterprise funds, we call them. Those funds are mostly supported through fees charged for the services for water use, trash collection, et cetera. And then there's many special assessment districts, landscaping, community facilities. Also, if we issue bonds, we might have a special bond fund where we track just those monies that we borrowed through the issuance of the bonds and then the projects that we're spending those on. So a big portion of our money that we receive, our revenue that we get is from property taxes. About 32% of the general fund monies is from property taxes. And so on an average home in Oxnard, if the value of that house is 500,000, your total property tax bill is 1%, which would be 5,000. And then the city receives just a small portion of that, about $880. And the rest of your property taxes are going to school districts and, and other state and county needs. And so this, oops, I was just going to say that depicted that quick dollar that flash by depicted that, how that property taxes and tax rate is 9.25%. And so that includes some state taxes, county taxes, and then the Oxnard specific taxes, which in this graphic are in the, the middle of that area. There's the 1%, what's called the Bradley Burns tax. And that's a statewide tax that all cities collect that 1%. And then we've, are fortunate to have Measure E approved by the voters in November 2020, that one and a half percent. And then additionally, the Measure O, which is the half percent. And so that 3% comes directly to the city of Oxnard. And just to show in terms of what that is, on a $20 shirt, if you were to purchase that, the total sales tax, that 9.25% would be a dollar and 85 cents. And the city gets 60 cents of that. So for each $20 shirt, the city receives 60 cents into our general fund that we do use for those general services that we talked about earlier, fire, police, public works, et cetera. And so the general fund, we have several sources of revenue. I mentioned the property tax, which is about 32%. Sales tax is around 46% of our total revenue. And those taxes, along with business tax, the hotel tax or TOT that Mr. Nguyen mentioned earlier, those all make up over 85% of our total revenue. So 86.4% of our total revenue comes from taxes. The remainder is from fees and other grants and other sources. We have, so the other sources, many of those are going to be very restricted in how they can be used. So I mentioned bond proceeds earlier. If we do issue debt, then that, those proceeds can only be spent on the projects that we had issued that debt for. We have special assessment districts and grants and the utility revenue as well. So that utility revenue can only be spent on the operations of those utilities. So we use those funds from that terminology to keep track of these different pots of money and make sure that when we collect revenue for a certain operational item or capital improvement, that those monies are only spent on that activity. And then we also like to make sure that we're being prudent, not only with the taxpayers' money and how we expend it, but also saving for rainy days. And we've experienced that recently in the last couple of years with the pandemic and what that did with our revenues and operations. So the current goal the city council has set for us is to set aside 12% of the general fund as a reserve. And then in the utilities, our target is to have a 25% reserve. And that is a set aside a rainy day fund so that if we do come into hard times or there is a change in the economy, we have, are able to continue operating and providing the much needed services to the residents and businesses of the city. And I think with that, I'm going to send it back to our city manager, Alex Nguyen.
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to go through some more slides now that review what we've been doing this current year. And I failed to mention, this is a, going to be a rather long video presentation. So I certainly hope as you're viewing this, you have your favorite beverage by your side. So we can get through this. And also, as I said before, many of these slides will have a lot of information. So you know, obviously use the pause button so you can take your time to review the information on the slides. Again, the, the information is also published on the city's website and you can see both or download both this presentation as well as the written staff report that, that will accompany this. So as a reminder, the city council does have priorities established for us. It's a, it's a total of five categories here and 25 items. I won't review each of these in detail, but quality of life, economic development, public safety, infrastructure, natural resources and organizational effectiveness are the five broad categories. Also, one of the few silver linings that came out of the pandemic is we, for the first and perhaps only time ever, certainly in my professional lifetime, we receive and all, and this not Oxnard, all cities receive direct funding from the federal government, the part of the American Rescue Plan Act. So for us, we received a, a total of $59.5 million. It is one-time funding. The council has appropriated the bulk of that for specific projects over the next several years. Some more information on that is available if, when, if and when you do review the whole budget book. Now with regard to Measure E, because it was approved in November of 2020, and there's a lot of confusion about when we started receiving the funding and there are some assumptions made that we, you know, we have a year's funding since November of 2020 and that unfortunately isn't the case. So as a quick reminder, it was approved by voters in November of 2020. It went into effect in April of 2021. So that was just over a year ago, April. And we did not receive the first revenues from it until the end of June 2021. So that's about 11 months ago. So we, after this June, we will have received the first full year of the Measure E new revenue. So what we had set out to do is given that we now have sufficient funds to provide the, the most basic services and programs for the community, obviously we can't do everything at once. So we set out to fashion three years of restoration budgets. So we are currently in and ending the first year. And what we have here is the proposal for year two, this coming fiscal year for '22 and '23. And then there'll be another year. Now, given the challenges I spoke of earlier, this may or may not stretch out a little bit longer. We will, we will see what happens in the economy and the world around us in this coming year. So here, I'm going to begin with some of the highlights. Again, these slides have plenty of information. Feel free to press, use the pause button as you, as you review this. But we were able to begin investing into our parks, our medians and our tree maintenance. So you can see the, the amount of funding that went into those activities during this current year. And these are numbers as of the middle of May of this year. Also, you can see where we were prior to Measure E in these various categories and where we are now. So this, I'll, I'll go over it quickly. So in terms of, for example, mowing the grass in the parks, only two years ago and, and before that, we were trying our best to, to get to mowing once a month. And now we're able to do it once a week. In terms of tree pruning, we were able to prune 1,562 trees a year. We're on pace now to be at over 7,000 trees a year. Trash removal. This is from our public trash cans. We were doing that weekly. Now we're able to do that three times a week. Restroom cleaning, excuse me. We did that as best as we could. And now we have it at daily restroom custodial services. Gopher control. We didn't have a gopher control program and now we're at monthly. And then in terms of irrigation repairs, we didn't have a program. And now we have an on-call program, pardon me. In terms of the, how we've broken up the work across the city, Public Works has designated three broad regions to cover the entirety of the city. And you can see the amount of work done for each region in terms of tree pruning, median and parkway landscaping maintenance, as well as maintenance of the hardscape. So you can see it broken down again for regions one, two and three. And the numbers here vary a little bit across each activity, across each region. Next, in terms of the parts and the, the amenities, the utilities and the equipment, you can see prior to Measure E, we weren't able to do a whole lot. And with Measure E, we're able to now, you can see the investments here on this far right column of the work we've been able to invest in at our parks. And then the mowing, again, breaking it down across these regions. And here for the general services parts, we have, in terms of the parts, we have four regions. And, and you can see the breakdown of the mowing schedule there. This was not possible prior to Measure E. Next, we are looking at our streets, which are part of the capital improvement program. But you can see we are in the process of completing more than $4 million of investments. Repaving East and West Gonzalez Road, which is the equivalent of 26 lane miles. We're in the process of 1.2 million in repaving Doris Avenue. And we've completed $4.8 million worth of work on various residential street repairs, which adds up to 12.6 lane miles. And here again, you can look on this map to see the blue highlight here is the work that's in process and the red is the work that we've completed in this last year. And we're still in, of course, in process of continuing to invest in road maintenance. So here is a, another chart that gives you a status of where we are. When this is all done, it will represent over $24 million worth of investments. But you can see the primary areas and the amount of investment going in. The anticipated date of completion and also sort of a, a status column here on the far right of where the projects are. Again, press pause and review the slides at your leisure. Then in terms of non-street investments, in terms of other hardscape and amenities, you can see we're working on almost $3 million worth of replacing playgrounds and designing other projects and facility improvements, as well as stormwater facilities. All this again is made possible by Measure E. With regard to potholes, this this between July of 21 and March of 22, we've repaired over 2,500 potholes around the city, which is more than double the amount in the nine months prior to receiving measure E revenue. So we understand there's more work to be done, but again, we are making progress here. On some of the other issues and programs and services, we're continuing to make progress on the affordable housing front. You can see that in this box here. We're just starting, but making really, really good progress at the outset on the South Oxnard Aquatic Center. We continue to win grants to improve our parks. We continue to add to our services for the homeless community. We are, in addition to getting grant funding, we have restored our youth and senior programs. And we also helped specific to the the effects of the pandemic. One of the things we did that our staff are very proud of over the last year is we continue to repurpose our employees to help with food share distribution here in Oxnard. And they are have been, and unfortunately, the need remains. And they continue to provide food for 4,000 individuals in Oxnard each week. So we are very proud of being able to to stand up our staff to help them to make those food distributions possible and to run smoothly and with a whole lot of civility, which has been wonderful. And then Recreation also hosted a small handful of meetup cleanup events at the parks this past year. And then two, what they call mega events. I don't know exactly what that means, but I assume those were two events that were bigger than the six, I guess, regular cleanup events. Economic development, so Amazon finally actually opened. We we on staff worked very hard just to get that out of the starting block and across the finish line. And one of the things we are most proud of is our efforts in working with Amazon to handle the recruitment of city of Oxnard residents to apply for those jobs. And with more than 1,500 jobs there right now, 60% of the employees are actually here in Oxnard from Oxnard. We're continuing with the implementing the cannabis policy. We expect about six retailers to open this year. So we'll see how that goes. Employee pipeline, something we started right before the pandemic. So we are slowly growing this program. But as a reminder, this is where the goal is to, and this particularly is focused on working adults in Oxnard. The goal is to for the college to provide a few, a handful, a small handful of classes that are training classes to get our residents to be more competitive and employable by the many great companies and employers that are already here in Oxnard. And then we continue to host job fairs in partnership with Oxnard College and the West Ventura County Business Alliance. In terms of public safety, again, we're we're able to make, you know, begin to make restorations for our police department, including their homeless services unit, what they call the Homeless Liaison Officers, the HLOs. We have are continuing with our fire departments responding to calls for service in terms of of a whole variety of calls, but also in terms of responding to fires. And then Fire Department is continuing to get grant funding to help us operate the department and continuing work to provide advanced life support known as ALS, to do more of that work for our community. So again, restorations are slow, but they are steady and solid. In terms of overall organizational effectiveness, we continue providing as much financial transparency as possible. The one of the key tools for that is the city's financial portal on our website. And you can go right there to oxnard.org/finances and view the city's financial portal. We are able to meet what we want for the general fund reserve to be at 15% in terms of what we're proposing. We are looking at and studying the pension obligation bonds possibility. That's just at the beginning stage. And I want to reiterate, if it makes it through the the court validation process, we would still at at the time, whenever that is, have to study the current state of the bond market to see if it actually makes sense or not. We certainly believe it will and hope it will, but there's always a possibility that it may not. So so this pension obligation bond is not a foregone conclusion. It still needs to be studied. In terms of staffing, we are continuing, although, as I said, with regard to the great resignation across the nation, I I'm I think we're going to slow down in the next year. So we'll see. I know our HR staff is the mighty engine that that can do anything, but in that they are optimistic, but I'm personally concerned about the the state of the labor market, especially for municipal government. And then we have been able to add more training and development programs for our staff. And here, we're also just getting started. There is much more to be done. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. George to go over the highlights of the budget we are proposing to the city council. Ms. George?
Thank you. Yes. So in this year two of the three year restoration budget, we have, as Mr. Nguyen mentioned, a lot of work to do. And we've we've done a lot already and still quite a bit to do. And the departments had $32 million in really excellent ideas and and things that they needed to do or wanted to do for the city. And we could afford approximately 12 million. So it was it's a good position to be in in deciding where to add to our budget and much different than years past. And so the following are the recommendations that we're going to be bringing to the council at the June 7 meeting and also for the public to weigh in during that public hearing. So for Public Works, this this fiscal year, we added a little bit more than $10 million in all of the work that Mr. Nguyen had already talked about that is occurring in our parks and medians. And then an additional 2.2 million is recommended for this year to continue that work, as well as from Measure O, 2.2 million directly related to resurfacing alleys and much needed in our city. For the police department, this current year, we invested just under $8 million in restoring neighborhood policing and increasing the activity in all of the neighborhoods. And this year, the proposal is for the 2223 year, another just under $1 million, continuing to invest in staffing for our 911 response times and the dispatchers there, as well as increasing support staff. For the fire department, we added just under $6 million for this current fiscal year. And we're proposing an additional $2 million in this proposed budget. Part of that is for staffing and adding a second battalion, as well as replacing some aging fire apparatus and much needed staff training for our emergency services. And also, we're proposing for Measure O, a $1.7 million pay down, early pay down on the fire station eight debt, and that will save us interest in the long run. For community development, we invested about $3 million last year or this year, 2122. This year is not quite over. In my budget mind, I think of it as last year already. And so for the proposed budget, it's $1.2 million additional investment as we continue to improve the service delivery in that area with permitting and plan check. Also, using some of those funds to hire contract services to help us with those efforts to improve the time that it takes to respond to businesses and residents. Cultural community services, this fiscal year, we invested quite a lot, $3 million. And I know some of that activity due to the pandemic was not able to take place, but that budget stays in place for this year. And then we're adding just over $100,000 to continue to serve the youth, seniors, and work on the art programs. Also, we're going to have an additional $300,000 for Measure O that will be to refresh the library technology infrastructure and it'll help with the enhanced service delivery there. Technology, we mentioned is one of those invisible things, but is the backbone to much that happens in the city. We're proposing an additional $3.5 million investment. It's both for staffing and for outdated equipment and software, much needed upgrades there. And an additional $450,000, so a total of almost $4 million investment in our technology department. There's some other investments that are smaller than the ones that I highlighted in some of the more background and support departments, so billing and licensing, human resources, the city manager's offices. All told, the total additions proposed from department is $12.2 million. The total general fund budget increase compared to last year is a is not is a little bit more than $12 million. And that's because there's other changes that are occurring. The infrastructure use fee reimbursement is higher than it was last year. We have some salary, increased salaries as natural step movements happens for our staff. So the total budget increase is a little bit more than 12 million. And you'll see the totals for all the departments here on this slide. And similar advice to what Ms. Nguyen had is that maybe pause this slide and and take a look at these amounts for each department. We've included the Measure O because that's another $18.2 million. That is invested in each of these departments for their operations. And this is just a graphical depiction of our revenue sources and our expense expenditures. So on the left hand side is our revenue sources. And I talked earlier about this, the property taxes being 32%, and then sales tax being nearly 50%. And then we have the other sources listed there as well. On the right hand side is our expenditures. And you can see a big portion of it goes to safety, fire and police. And I just wanted to note here, the non-departmental that is a confusing description, I think, that $41 million. And that includes all of our capital projects that are being funded from the general fund. So it's a little bit more than $12 million in this proposed budget. The infrastructure use fee reimbursement, which is $10 million. And so there are some significant items that don't necessarily belong in a single department that are in that piece of the pie. And so those are the this is the total city. So the previous slide was just the general fund. So for our revenue from all sources, which includes the enterprise fund and general fund, is just under $600 million. And then our expenditures are $667 million. And the difference between those two is going to be bonds that we haven't issued yet, and then also spending down some fund balance for some ongoing capital projects that were appropriated in prior years. Here's a look at Measure O. I mentioned it briefly before. So our total expenditures, I had said 18.2 million. It's actually 18.6. On the earlier slides for each department, as it is in the general fund, as inflation and continued advancement from the pandemic as the economy recovers. And Mr. Nguyen mentioned this, Measure O is set to sunset naturally in 2029, based on the measure that was approved by the voters. However, we have Measure N looming as a potential to have it sunset in 2027. But either way, we have to work on a plan to continue all these services and get these expenditures into the general fund. And we're working closely with the Measure O Oversight Committee and City Council on a plan to do that. For the first year of that schedule to move items into the general fund, we have the station eight, fire station eight operations, $4.8 million. We're proposing moving that into the general fund. And then in place, having some one time projects be moved from the general fund into Measure O. And I think that's it for my slides. I'll send it back to Mr. Nguyen.
Great. Thank you. So just some concluding remarks. So the the as I looked across all of our departments, you know, I have to remind all of our directors that, you know, what can we achieve with what we have, which is also sort of the other, the flip side of when people say, you know, live within your means. So we have to be very mindful about what we're able to achieve with what we have. So again, here are some reminders of some earlier slides. The the revenue is what it is. It doesn't fluctuate that much year to year. And then how we invest it and the choices that the council makes. Now granted, based on our staff's recommendations, but they do juggle and balance this dictates the outcomes, right? The various services, programs, maintenance, and any areas of growth. And I am still focused on on slowly improving organizational effectiveness. So all of all of these outcomes here are are determined not just by how much we invest, but also the level of talent we have at the various positions, the the quality of the management that we have, the quality of the training that we have, and the the work ethic of our of all of our employees and the spirit of public service that we all aspire towards. So these are all works in progress. And there's a lot more to be done. But again, the good news is we are making steady forward progress. The other reminder, of course, is we are planning now to address what's going to happen when Measure O sunsets in when we receive the last payment in the first quarter in the spring of 2029. We are not turning a blind eye towards this. So what obviously what we don't want to do is spend this money, all of this money as we approach 2029 and then have that year, you know, have this $20 million cliff. So we are, as we present each budget, starting with this one, we are being very mindful of Measure O sunsetting. And again, these very, very important events happening in the world around us, Oxnard, like all other communities, we may be special, but we don't operate and exist and function in a bubble. All of these things that are going on around the world have significant and concrete impacts on the work that we do. So again, I say all this and remind people of all these issues to understand that a lot of these choices that the city council will make and the how the world around us impacts us and influences what we're doing will also determine the quantity and the quality and the speed of the work that we can deliver in this coming year. And I fear even in the year after that. So it's just important to be mindful of these global events that actually have tangible impacts on our everyday work as an organization. So again, this is, so you've made it this far. Thank you. Especially if you've taken the time to press the pause button and look at the slides in detail or to refresh your beverage. So we will, having this this So we will have this discussion. We won't unfortunately be having this presentation at the public hearing on June 7. And then based on that discussion, we will bring back the final budget proposal for the city council to adopt on June 21st. So that is the end of a rather long presentation. Again, thank you for taking the time to view this. We look forward to hearing input from the public and whether it's prior to or during the public hearing on June 7. Thank you.